Tonight, having the paperwork before us, having the record of the prior appeal and our discussion with Ms. Moore. I'm not sure there'd be any additional information that we would need.
I wouldn't mind if we delayed it until January, just so that I could look into, I mean, it piques my interest, the two houses that were built around the same time, to see if they're actually on the sewer. If they were built at the same time but the same builder, why wasn't this one recorded? You know? I guess my issue with this policy that we created is, and this appeals process is, at what stage do we actually give somebody a break? If we do ever give them a break? Why did we create an appeals process if we're never, ever going to allow somebody not to have to pay this bill? Maybe we shouldn't have created this appeals process. I asked Mr. Blanchard the same thing, and it was kind of like, well, we don't know. So every person that appeals this sewer bill and they come in front of us, is it automatically a rejection? Is my case, or in what circumstances would we grant some relief?
Not automatically, I think it's circumstances, you know? Hardship would be one reason that, for giving, for granting relief.
When you say hardship, do you mean like somebody just can't pay?
Yes.
Or somebody came with proof that it, the connection was a newer connection than what we billed it at? That would be another reason.
I missed that, Tom.
If somebody came in with proof that the connection occurred after the date that, you know, it was a newer connection than six years and we billed it six years, or a newer connection than four years.
Right, but then it would be approved at Mr. Blanchard's level, before it got to us.
Probably, but...
I'm saying if anybody comes in front of this board, after getting rejected by Mr. Blanchard, is there, is there ever going to be a circumstance where we would approve it? Or are we just, is everybody an automatic rejection?
Yeah, it would have to be in the facts.
There's no automatic rejection. It's, whether it's at this board or at the appeals officer level before Mr. Blanchard. And the, if you look at the bottom of page five, you know, we've appointed the assistant town administrator to make determinations on concerns, grievances, hardships, any dispute of facts. That goes to the point Tom raised. I had mentioned hardship raised by any aggrieved customer, ability to pay. So there's different criteria in the policy for determinations to be made. And then, and we go through the whole process of what the appeals process has been, and Ms. Moore has been through this process.
Yeah, I understand.
So...
Yeah, it pretty much has group hardships and dispute of facts.
Yes.
But, yeah, I know, I mean, I wish, to be honest, I wish I had read that better at the beginning, because what if Ms. Moore came in and said, "I just can't pay it"? What would happen then? You know? Are we going to have everybody appealing now and saying, "We just can't pay it"? It's a hardship case.
Well, I think the town administrator mentioned last week, we've had a number of letters already gone out, and they have been, this is the first appeal we've had, so this is the first time through this, which, you know, first time through anything is a challenge. But we, those would be some circumstances for granting relief if we were to make a finding that there were some of these, one or more of these criteria were met.
I mean, and a hardship is a high hurdle to...
Yes. The hardship goes to ability to pay. So, yeah, my understanding, and correct me, Mr. Moore, if I'm right, is, I believe you said it last week, Mr. Cohen, that the house has been sold?
Mm-hmm.
And the money is, the funds are, the $5,500 are sitting in an escrow, while this, for this dispute to be resolved.
Right.
Well, it had to sit in an escrow, the house, if the sale wouldn't go through.
Yes, yes. And again, that's part of the policy, that, what we normally do under the policy is allow a period of several years for the payment to be made, and so, breakdown of how that's calculated. But obviously, when the house gets sold, then it's not something that you can bind the successor buyer to. So that's why that gets triggered, when the house is sold, then the full payment needs to be paid out of the sale proceeds. So that, that's in the policy as well.
Right, and no interest was charged, or penalties and interest are waived, as long as the bill is paid.
So I, Dennis has indicated he'd like to wait until January 6th. I'm not sure that additional information about other houses would be relevant. I guess I could be persuaded, I'm not sure why they would be relevant.
Well, if, if the three houses were built at the same time, and you have two sewer systems that were on the register since day one, yet...
Why wasn't the third one?
Why wasn't the third one?
We never, I don't think we're ever going to be able to figure that out, though.
Yes, but, you know, we can look at the old permits to build a house. Was there a water and sewer permit pulled, to put in the water and sewer?
Well, we discussed that, too. When we went through that, that we weren't going to go there, that some of these well could have been, if you want to call it, the town's fault.
Right.
In that the, either the records got lost, or, or, they were all paper records back then, there were no computers back 35 years ago, if that's when it happened. You know, at least not, at least not at the town level. And, you know, these were all manual records, and, you know, it could well be that the town lost it, it could well be that the contractor didn't submit it. I mean, there's just no way, there's just no way of knowing.
And DPW's job has been to look into this and figure it out, and to the extent they can, to see, you know, was there ever a connection, was there a, I forget what Joe called them, he had some kind of a name for the paper cards, you know, to try to do some research into what the circumstances were, whether it was an error, a clerical error in the town, or whether it was the fault of a contractor, to the extent that they can determine that. But, in either scenario, whether it's a mistake by the town, or a mistake by a contractor, or by a homeowner, or some other reason, you know, whether it was a connection that was made that wasn't made known to the town, and again, that doesn't sound like that was the case here.
Right.
Regardless of which one it was, that because the homeowner still had the benefit of the service over a number of years.
Right.
Then we'd still have the six-year look-back period.
The only thing I'd like to discuss maybe a little bit further is the sprinkler system. And, I mean, we really can't determine at this point whether, whether the faves knew that they were connected to sewerage or not. They didn't have a separate meter. I have a sprinkler system, I'm connected to septic, I don't have a separate meter, there's no reason to, because I don't pay sewerage anyways. The only reason you'd have one is, is if you were connected to town sewerage. That had they had one, certainly this bill would have been cheaper, because they would have, you know, whatever water they were using to sprinkle wasn't going down the sewer system. You know, should we consider maybe some relief in, for that sense?
I'm glad you said that, Tom, because I understand the appeals process better than anybody. I'm always in front of appeals boards. And it's usually not black and white. It's not like you get rejected or you get approved, it's where can we negotiate, you know? And I'm not sure if we put that in our policy.
Well, the policy says for hardship, for facts in dispute, I mean, the policy is something that we spent, I just want to point this out, this board spent a fair amount of time with Joe Lynch, with town council, with town administrator, and others, working on this policy. And it does give certain criteria. You know, this is, we get to keep in mind, the homes that were not built did receive a benefit for, and, obviously, the terms vary depending on the home and when it was built, and when the connection was made, but there is a benefit that homeowners have received that have not been paid for, that other residents in the town, you know, have paid for during that particular period of time. So we did give a narrow category of why we would grant relief from the look-back period. So, so I think the policy does have the criteria that we would apply.
I mean, if we're talking about hardship, and just in my opinion, I believe that there is some hardship here. Like, it's not Mary Morris' house, it was her parents'. They both died within a month of each other. She's left holding the bag here to pay all the bills. You know, she's been, she's faced with this $5,500 bill that she never expected. I think there should be some consideration for $1,000 or something, you know, just...
Well, I think Tom's point about the sewer is something that we could look into.
The sprinkler system.
The sprinkler system, excuse me. I guess we would need to ask DPW to look into that issue for us, and see if they could run a calculation...
Some kind of equitable, yeah, split between sprinkler system and other water use. It would have to be an estimate, there's obviously no way to determine.
I think that's all we could be, is an estimate. Yeah. And Ms. Moore, I believe you said that you're not sure when the sprinkler was hooked up?
I honestly don't know. I think it's been quite some time that I'm aware of, because...
Okay.
My parents always had a very nice lawn, so...
How big is the lot? Approximately how?
It's not, it's not very big. I mean, it's got a backyard, it's not, I really don't even know how big it is. And it's got, you know, a front yard, and this conservation over on the left of it, so...
Okay.
She had it running, I don't know, like, twice a day.
Okay.
Every other day. I know the last bill that I got, because I had it on probably more than normal, was, you know, one of the higher ones, because it was a lot more than I thought it was going to be.
What was the address of the house?
329 Canton. Canton.
Canton?
Yep.
You looking for the acreage size of the lot?
Yeah.
It sounds like that's the consensus of the board, to look into the sprinkler issue, and how that might, how DPW would be able to estimate the difference between the sprinkler system and the home. The charge, you know, the charges, the water charges attributable to both, to the extent that they can.
That's not coming up, yeah, no, it's not.
Okay, is that the desire of the board, to take this under advisement and to continue it until January 6th?
Unless it's something we can determine tonight, but...
Do we have a motion to continue the hearing until January 6th?
Want to make that motion?
One second.
Any discussion on the motion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Ms. Moore, we'll continue this until January 6th. If you'd like to be here, you certainly can be, it's not a requirement, but...
Not, you'll just let me know, then?
Yes, but you're certainly welcome to be here. Be in, the meeting would be in this room, it's a Tuesday, January 6th, at 7:00 would be our next meeting. And what we'll do is contact you beforehand, and let you know where on the agenda it will be, so that we can give you an estimate.
Okay.
On what time you can be here. I know you were waiting quite a while tonight, so we appreciate your waiting.
Okay.
All right, thank you for being here.
Thanks.
Michael, thank you for staying. We are on to the Public Works budget would be next. Do we want to take something else out of order?
Engineering?
I think that's, I think that's also DPW. Yeah, let's go on to that, number 11, the civilian dispatch applicant.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Sean Casey, 585 Adams Street, to the position of civilian dispatcher in the Milton Police Department contingent upon approval by the Personnel Board.
Second.
And a successful psychological and medical screening.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, why don't we go on to number 14, the Wakefield Charitable Trust pilot payment?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve a payment in lieu of taxes, pilot payment from the Mary MB Wakefield Charitable Trust in the amount of $16,000.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very thankful for that generous donation.
It is, because it's not a big, it's not a big charitable trust.
It's not, and it's a, it's a good significant sum for charitable, charitable organization that, of that size. So we thank them for that gift, for that donation. Okay, DPW Director Joe Lynch is here, so we will move on. Just letting the town administrator know, we've covered items number 11 and 14. Good evening, Joe.
Good evening. Hope we weren't waiting.
We have a few items for you tonight, including, shall we start with your budget?
Do that.
I thought your narrative report, Joe, was very good and very helpful.
That was very helpful.
It was late, and I apologize for that, and I hope it was clear enough to, you know, give you some good insight on it.
It did.
But I guess, you know, for the folks at home who haven't understood where we're at yet, everybody knows that the charge given to us was to produce three budgets. One was a level dollar, same as last year, as you guys all know, and one is to come in with a 2% cut. And, you know, that's complicated for me, how you got there, but in essence, it's to reduce your spending. And then lastly, is those things that you need to do, ought to do, without being crazy, without being, you know, over-exuberant, to come in and tell the, tell the town, you know, what that is. And we, and we did that, we did exactly that. We, we did achieve our level dollar budget, and our level of service budget, coincidentally, is darn close to the level dollar budget. And now, as I go through, I can explain how we achieved that. Did a 2% cut as a way to demonstrate that if we did that, there would be some loss of services, and those services would be focused on an area that's, that's really a new mandate, and you've heard me talk about it for years, and that's the NIPD's National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, Stormwater System. So, in, given that charge, what we did is, is look at some of the direction given to us, as far as the, the way the funds are managed throughout the year. And, and part of that charge included that, you know, a separate budget be done for each department, and I use the word "department" in quotes, and maybe the narrative didn't clearly follow that, but in essence, we think of Public Works as Public Works. The public does. I think of Public Works as nine departments. It's Public Works, it's vehicle maintenance, it's the collection of the trash, it's the transfer and disposal of the trash, it's recycling, hazardous waste material handling, landfill closure, water and sewer. This year, recognizing that there's this, this new federal permit out for public comment, we know we are ramping up, and I've been talking about this for years, ramping up towards that new permit and the expectations of that permit. And I've talked to this board in recent history about the, the thought is that in order, if the final, if the draft permit ends up passing and becoming the final permit, the impact to Milton is 1.2 to 1.3 million dollars a year in stormwater spending.
Can you remind us what that permit is? The stormwater?
It's a stormwater permit. That's a federal EPA permit under the system that's called National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. We, our acronym, we refer to it as NIPDs. Some people call it nitpick, but we call it NIPDs. So, we partnered up with other communities, the Regional Planning Agency, as well as NEPR, if you remember. In fact, this is, I think maybe it's for future agenda, is to, is to discuss partnering up with them again for another grant, but we got a Community Innovation Challenge Grant, and part of that grant was to, for the group of communities to look at what this new permit meant, how would they best gear up to meet it? More importantly, on a regional basis, what types of things can that towns do as a, as a group to minimize redundancy and effort, and therefore make it more efficient, less costly, more cost-effective, if you will. But part of that also was that two communities were singled out to be a pilot community to look specifically at what you're doing, how you're doing it, put it in the context of the new permit, so you could better understand what that might cost. And that's where that 1.2 to 1.3 million dollar estimate comes from, is through, through that effort, that planning effort. It's not a wild guess, it's very carefully planned maceration of looking at the permit compared to those things that we already do. And what came out of that, and, and the talk in our realm has been stormwater, ramping up year to year to year. In, in November, Anne Marie, the town administrator, and Amy Dexter, the town accountant, and I went to a workshop squats by the MWRA, and there were a couple hundred people in that room. And it was, the topic was exactly that, and the things that, you know, the town should be prepared for, it was more abstract, but we, because we knew what it meant in our own way. What came out of it, though, is the towns should be doing the stormwater work they've been doing, tracking the, what you're doing and the dollars that you're spending already. Those are monies you're already investing into that effort. And then lastly, contemplate how you're going to pay for it in the future. And we've talked in the past, there are tools available down the road, a couple of years, in fact, probably, before we look at, do we create a stormwater utility? Do we add this extra cost to the tax base? Do we just give a flat fee to per household basis, per taxpayer basis? Do we do it on some sort of equity of impervious area? Sky's the limit, further down the road. But what that allows us to do, has allowed me to look at this budget, and I created for the first time a stormwater budget. Why? Because we collect yard waste at a substantial cost, it's required on the permit, put it in stormwater. We collect household hazardous waste, 12, $13,000 a year, put it in stormwater. We sweep streets, clean catch bases, clean drain lines, do inspections of drain lines, we administer the maps, we administer the permit. All those things we're doing, I put in stormwater. So as this effort moves forward, we can demonstrate to EPA, these are the things we're doing, and this is what we're spending already. So you see a new department in here for the first time. So I don't want you to think it's, you know, I'm just trying to slide something, and Tom asked three years ago, brilliant idea, is taking all of those departments and try to compare personnels up, and expenses are down, and that...
Yeah, pull them all back together.
Pull them into a summary budget, and I've done that. And that's actually the first sheet of the budget that you have. And you can see, by taking those things that are DPW general, vehicle maintenance, solid waste, and stormwater, those things known as DPW, pull them all together, and in aggregate, you can see, in fact, I hit the level dollar budget by balancing between them. And the level of service also allows me to do that, and I can do that for about the same money. So with that, with that said, Tom, do you want me...
I had one question.
Sure, go ahead.
So the stormwater, is this completely new from this year on, or has it always been there?
Some of it's been there, I think, and some of it's new, right?
Exactly. The new permit, so you were driving a high-performance car, well, they just gave you a Formula One car. We've been doing this thing, and we've been riding it now for eight years, and they've just now said, "Okay, you're doing really good." Boom, the entire United States, now you're doing these things. Some of the things we hadn't been doing a great job on, but they're going to absolutely come in and say, "Well, you, now you have to do those." And there's a, there's probably going to be a three, four, five-year phase in, before you fully implement all of the new permit.
Who monitors all of this? So you're going to be cleaning streets and...
Two, well, three people, really.
Or give send-in someone?
Self-reporting, under pains of perjury every April. I do. And I have to report that to DEP and to the EPA. DEP and the EPA both monitor Milton. DEP monitors the state as well. So we have to be in compliance with the state in answer to them. The state themselves have the overall permit, and EPA monitors them and us directly.
If you're in violation, what happens?
$25,000 a day, per violation, every day being a separate violation. It's the penalty, maximum.
And very quickly, how, how much extra to your budget this year is the stormwater utility?
I was going to get into that in a little more detail. In it, I think the round number's $150,000. And what I did is, is I took the liberty of recognizing that we, there was a solid waste advisory committee in this board, a selectman, approved a contract to issue a new trash contract. We went through some growing pains, going from five-day collection to two-day collection, but the net result of that is we saved $150,000 this year over last year's costs.
On the garbage?
On trash.
On trash.
Trash and recycling.
And that's going to go to the increase?
If I took that money and put it into stormwater.
Okay.
To achieve that, the net zero increase, the level dollar, if you will.
I see.
Joe, just looking at, because it looks like, in terms of getting your minus 2%, a lot of that came out of stormwater, the reductions?
Yeah, if, I mean, I think I...
About a hundred grand anyways came out of.
Well, I was trying to not hit the services that we're providing on a regular basis, which, in my opinion, fall short of what we should be doing anyway. So recognizing these are new mandates, if you're, if the direction of the, the town is to, in fact, cut 2%, then my answer is going to be, I will tell EPA...
We can't afford it.
We can't afford it.
Yeah.
We, we've tried. The town might have to answer, "Well, what do you do with the money you save?"
Right, okay.
Towns have to balance budgets all the time, you know, across the entire country, not just in Milton.
Yeah.
So, but that's how I did, I hit it, I did it deliberately, Tom.
Okay.
Recognizing that, you know, I don't think there should be much of a tolerance of cutting the services we provide day to day. I also don't think we should be cutting those services and trying to meet this mandate, especially when we have the opportunity that we did, of the, of the trash savings. That's my opinion, I mean, for what it's worth.
Yeah. So, so the 2% reduction in the, in the stormwater would mean less, certainly a reduction in the amount of services provided in terms of stormwater mitigation?
It would be, it would be a reduction, none of those things that we're already doing. I think I can still maintain those things.
But, but the extra things are...
It would be those things to ramp up on that new permit, those, those new things that they're going to be wanting in the early years.
Would be the things that...
Those are the ones that are going to be in peril.
We'll go first.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
That's what I chose to do.
Now, are there also some new positions in here? I know, I know...
Numerically, there is, just as a matter of clarity, but in, in reality, there isn't. Reorganization just recently happened, I think just last week it closed and became official. So in the FY '16 budget, the one person who's been transferred from the central business office, whose duties are water and sewer, her, her position has been moved to Public Works.
That's right, yeah.
But she's fully allocated, half water, half sewer.
Yep, okay.
So even though it's a net one increase, if you look at Central Business Office, there's a net one loss of that position, and I'm not sure what else is happening over there.
Okay.
It was a dollar-for-dollar transfer, so there's no increase.
So, so in your DPW budget, forgetting about the, forgetting about the enterprise funds, that's, the, the change in, in the personnel line item is really just the raises...
It's 100% attributed to contractual bounds.
Increases.
Increases. You have, cost, you know, cost of living increases, any person who would be entitled to a step was included, and then they, longevity payments, and anybody who gets stipends.
The only other thing I noticed, and just in keeping with the way that the Warren Committee wanted it, is the contractual, the line item, the contractual services are winding up on was the wrong line, that the disposal contract, collection wound up in general expenses opposed to contractual expense. And it probably should drop down. I think we should probably just make that change. I mean, again, it really doesn't make any difference, because we didn't, yeah, on this Schedule E...
There's three, there's three lines that that can happen on. It's the collection of refuse.
Yep.
That's a, just a, it's a per-year fee, it's known.
Yep.
It's the collection of recycling, and a per-year fee, and it's collection of recycling. The disposal of trash is a unit cost, that should stay up in expenses, because it's not known, it's a unit cost.
Yep.
It's no different than what the cost of fuel is.
Right.
And the processing of recycling should stay up in expenses, because that's a per-ton basis as well, and the same with yard waste, those should all stay up in expenses.
Excellent, I agree, I agree. But I, I think the, when I looked at it, I'm pretty sure they were all wound up top, I think.
They were.
Yeah.
Yes, they were.
So those ones that are contracts, I think, should just go down, that's all. And I don't think it makes any, it doesn't impact anything, just...
Joe, on DPW general, two things. I was glad to see you allocated some of the funds for trees, because we've been trying to make that something to restore. And we certainly get a lot of inquiries and requests about trees. The second point was, you mentioned that the cost of utilities at Town Hall are all within your budget, that the expectation was that at some point they would go into consolidated facilities, but they're still in your budget, and yet you don't have any management or control over use of utilities or conservation efforts. Is there, do you work with consolidated facilities at all to try to coordinate efforts there, or is there other conservation steps we can take, even with the system?
I think the Consolidated Facilities Department does a great job in, in coming up with ways to save money. They relamped the entire building with energy-efficient lighting. lighting. My point was more to the, until, I mean, the reality is, why not? If we know that I'm spending X number of dollars on Town Hall on an average basis, at some point in time, take that money.
Put it in the other budget.
Move it to consolidated facilities, yeah.
Because what happens is, as rates increase year to year, regardless of any energy savings, why is my department saddled with the?
The increase, yeah.
With the increases.
Especially when you're trying to do a level-
At the expense of not planting trees, for example. So that's me maybe being a little too forthright, but it's a fact. It's not adversarial by any means.
No, I wasn't suggesting that, but is-
It's in my budget, and it's included this year, too.
But is there, maybe that's something we should look at for next year, trying to move that over to consolidated facilities. Would they have any, any way to reduce costs through bulk buying with the schools or with the?
I think they're doing that. I think, again, I think-
But if it's moved into his budget, does it give any savings there? Does it matter whose budget it's in, in terms of achieving savings?
I think it really does, other than the fact that when you're trying to deal with level dollar budgets, it's clearly unfair, but it's just as unfair to put it in, all in consolidated facilities if you're going to try and hold them to a level dollar budget. It's not their expense either.
To Katie's point, the town is purchasing the commodity, the energy.
So are you coordinating the buying efforts with consolidated facilities in DPW?
Townwide, yeah. I'm not buying my own. We buy the gasoline, diesel fuel on behalf of the entire town. They and the school department buy the energy on behalf of the entire town. Whichever facility it is, whether it's the library, police station, my buildings, this building, they're all paying a rate that was negotiated as a group.
Okay.
Yeah, but I agree with you, Katie. We should, we should really consider getting that out of his budget next year. Let's do it. All right.
Do you have other comments or questions on Joe's budgets?
Don't be on that now.
Joe, there was just, on your, on your narrative on the second page, were these percentages supposed to add up to 100%?
Yes. They're probably rounded, so there's, there's a fractional.
Well, it adds up to 90%. I'm just wondering what's the other 10%?
90?
Yeah. Where would the 10% be? And I should have called you earlier, and not to put you on the spot here, but.
Probably have the answer here. I can tell you, the answer is probably sitting somewhere on my fat fingers, who typed in a wrong number. Let's see what we had here. Allocation. Actually, I'm looking at my spreadsheet, and the spreadsheet is 100.
Maybe I'm embarrassing myself here.
I didn't mean to do that.
No, no.
I was willing to admit it was a typo, but I think they are 100.
Any other questions or comments for Joe?
Sorry, Dennis.
No, I still get it.
Joe, the town administrator passed me a note. Always a good suggestion. We've got two holiday weeks coming up. Could you remind the viewers about the trash collection schedule for the next two weeks?
What a great opportunity. Keeping it simple, we are lucky that the holidays fall, meaning Christmas Day and New Year's both fall on Thursdays this year, just as Thanksgiving Day, which means on those days, the entire town will be collected on Wednesday, Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve, the entire town. So regardless of where you live, or what your day used to be last week, or the month before, Wednesday of next week, and Wednesday of the following week, the entire town. The week after that, we're going to go right back to our Wednesday-Thursday schedule, which is what's been happening since July. And the only thing I do want to point out is we have Martin Luther King Holiday coming up in mid-January.
That's 100.
Regardless of Monday holiday, there is no delay ever. It's always going to be a Wednesday or Thursday, regardless of what week, holiday week.
Three times.
And speaking of the solid waste, speaking of the solid waste contract savings, you had a good point in this narrative that I think we're going to need to emphasize to the Warren Committee going forward, that this contract, when it expires, we might be facing a pretty significant increase because the circumstances under which we got the two-day-a-week collection.
Just because you had a contract with capacity and?
Right. It's because the Sunrise Scavenger had a contract for the other three days and happened to have the two days free. So we're benefiting it in these, is it three years or five years? I think it's five years.
Five years.
So at some point, we're going to potentially face a substantial increase in the solid waste savings.
And when they craft $750,000 worth of savings, when recognizing day of reckoning might be in 2020, when the new contract goes into place, we'll visit that.
Joe, what was the savings again?
Well, it's $150,000 per year on average. So life of the contract, it's $750,000. Three-quarters of a million dollars is not bad in a five-year contract.
No, not at all.
No.
As a committee, and there's two other members sitting at this table here, we were blessed with a very, very unique opportunity. And as many of us were wringing our hands saying, oh, my God, people hate changing this town, we felt really the two-day shift was well worth it. And so far, I believe it is.
Yeah. That's something we'll just have to keep in mind, especially as we get into years three and four, that there could be a big increase at some point. You know, we'll see what the circumstances are at that point. But any other questions or comments on the various DPW budgets?
I don't. I'm good.
Joe, anything else you want to add?
I do want to point out that water and sewer, just for the public, you people know that they're enterprise. For the first time, they're purely enterprise. There were some other numbers that I've submitted the budget as it is. There are three pretty big elements that are hanging out there. That's short-term borrowing, that's long-term debt service, especially given the fact we just authorized $5.4 million in borrowing on water. And the MWRA assessment. Those are all pretty big numbers. We're waiting for those numbers in the indirect cost allocation, meaning all the other departments, how they get assigned.
We don't think that's going to change dramatically, though, right?
The allocation, probably not. It's hot off the press, and if you don't mind, I'd like to share some great news. You know, this is something that my department should be very proud of. When I say hot off the press, I mean literally this morning. My narrative, in fact, which I finished up putting the polish on last night, even speaks to that they don't issue preliminary numbers until sometime after, shortly after the new year. Got them today. These are very, these are not assessments. This is, if you understand how our, two big factors that affect our assessment is flow share on water. How much water do you use as compared to the entire district? How much sewage do you contribute to the system as compared to the entire district?
Yep.
Our water flow share, meaning what we've used as compared to other districts, has gone down 2.9% in this, what's going to be used for this year's assessment. That reverberates through to, comparatively, we'll be paying, in fact, it is the second-best savings in water flow share across all of the 29 wholly served communities.
What do you attribute that to?
Fault in the toilet was.
Leaks, right?
Yeah.
It's leaks, it's maintenance, it's, you know, it's the change in metering.
Didn't we have a faulty meter one time?
We challenged them on that, and we fought that battle for a good year and a half. And in the end, what we finally have is, I think, for the first time in maybe a decade, we have far more accurate metering. And it took that first year of phasing in, of getting that new meter, and now it's really showing consistency year to year. And so that's, I think it's very, very good benefit to us. So that's not, I'll be very careful, that's not a 2.9% reduction in our assessment, that's not a 2.9% reduction in rates. That means simply that when the MWRA completes their final budget, our share of it is going to simply be that much less than everybody else's, which is great news. That's on the water side of it. Sewer side of things, I hate saying sewer and then side. But on the other side of the equation, you've got a more complicated, based on a three-year average, peak flows. What it all boils down to in the end is our flow share there has reduced by, wrong, actually, 2.7% as compared to the entire MWRA system. Out of 43 sewered communities, we have the third-best reduction in flow share. So we are really measuring up very, very well in finding financial benefit because of that.
Yeah, it's very good news.
It is good news.
So still, sometime in the, end of December, or that first week in January, we will get what those mean in dollars as a preliminary assessment. Sometime in June, well after town meeting, we'll get the final assessment, which is what we build our rates on when we come in.
How is it going with the prorated multifamily properties? How is that working administratively in your office?
It's difficult. We had, actually, I can't tell a story out of school in front of the TV. We do have, we did have one challenge from one of those customers. The result of that challenge, they invited us in to look at the situation, their configuration, one of those things we were concerned about, the metering and multiple meters, how we're not in control of the plumbing. Through that process, we discovered, in fact, that there was a, two new meters added, one of which we knew about, second of which, we had no record of. It's been in existence for a long time. We've got the, we're going to have to back-bill them. They did it on their own with no permits. And in fact, their multi-tier savings and their questioning of how it was done brought us in to discover that. So I think it's working pretty well in the long run.
Okay.
Similarly, we're making headway, week to week, certainly month to month, on the sewer investigations as well. And we've returned an awful lot of people to the sewer roles. We've put people on payment plans. We've had people who've paid them outright. So that's working pretty, I think that's working very well. My, to my knowledge, I think there's, there hasn't been more than one or two appeals.
At some point in time, can you come in with a, just a report to the, to the selectman on?
Yeah, at a future date.
Sure. I wasn't prepared to do that, but.
You just heard an appeal earlier tonight. Okay. Anything else on this budget?
I'm good, Joe.
And do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve and vote to the Warren Committee of the Department of Public Works FY '16 budget as follows. DPW general, vehicle maintenance, solid waste, stormwater, $4,348,974. Level service, $4,348,697. Level dollar. Water, $5,177,532. Level service, $4,457,581. Level dollar. Sewer, $7,371,064. Level dollar.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Before you take the vote, being careful on the water and sewer, those are not final numbers. We still have some pretty big numbers that have to come in. So I think, so I would say, if you vote that, fully recognize before we go to the Warren Committee, when the numbers work out with our consultant, with Amy.
They may be higher.
They will be higher. They will absolutely be higher.
Yep.
So we can submit a revised budget in January?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous.
Thank you.
Joe, we have two other items for you. One is the approval of an engineering intern, Liam Sherret Fahy.
I'll move to approve the temporary seasonal appointment of Liam Sherret Fahy, 182 Thatcher Street, in the engineering department, beginning January 1st, 2015.
Second.
Any discussion?
What is he going to be doing, Joe?
We always have two interns in the engineering department, and they are typically working on our water projects, our sewer projects, our drain projects, doing the plans and specs, putting them together. I mean, they're not doing hardcore engineering, but they're working in the tutelage of.
Is it, is it a paid internship?
Oh, it's paid internship. Yes, it is. Yes, it is. We're fortunate this year. We typically get them out of, mostly out of Wentworth University. We get them out of Northeastern. This particular student is a first-year, a second-year student at Wentworth and happens to live in Milton. It's a great situation.
Convenient. If no other discussion, then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And also, Joe, we have an acceptance of a gift from Sullivan and Company. Maybe you could just speak a little to this before we make a motion.
Sure. Milton Hill House, if you recall, actually, you should recall, it's a beautiful facility. Just built that new apartment building up on Elliot Street, across from Steel and Rye, across from the tracks from Steel and Rye. Part of that planning board approval required the developer to make certain improvements in front of their building, street lighting, sidewalks, and the source, street furnishings. It was made in good decision, in the context and in the vacuum of the project that was before them. What they didn't realize is we had simultaneously had pending a MassWorks grant to do these very similar items along that same stretch of street. We got that grant. We are working on that grant. We've awarded the contract. If you remember, Delisandro, you guys voted a couple of meetings ago. We had a kickoff meeting last week. They're prepared to start next week. The situation is, is why should we spend the money? Why should they not spend the money? It was part of their, so as part of the planning board's decision, allow them to contribute what would have been their value of doing those things. But we took our unit cost pricing and simply assigned it to that project, came up with that dollar, which is the gift amount. They're going to gift it to the town for that specific purpose, which augments or supplements our MassWorks funds.
Right, that makes sense.
See, I like that. They do this in Boston as well.
Yeah, we're not trying to be too innovative.
No, I understand, but it's.
It's a great idea, I thought.
You build a project that big, you've got to subscribe to the town.
It's going to complete harmonious look out there, all the way from the Central Avenue Business District to the Milton Hill Business District and everything now in between. It's going to give it a really unified look, and it's going to be nice.
Yeah, nice.
Nicer than it already is.
I'll move to accept a gift in the amount of $148,523 from Sullivan and Company, Inc., to cover the cost of installing new period lighting, granite curbing, and other sidewalk improvements along the front of 36 to 50 Elliot Street.
Second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Joe.
Anything else?
I don't think we had anything else for you, Joe, tonight.
Thank you.
No, thanks for waiting around. We appreciate it. You're getting to later than we thought we would, but thanks very much.
Good night.
Okay. We've covered the dispatch applicant. We are on to the town meeting articles, and I believe the planning director is going to join us for that. Okay, so when we, when we meet next on January 6th, that's the night we'll be closing the warrant. And so we should discuss tonight articles that we want to submit. I also have an update from the Government Study Committee on articles that they will be submitting. I spoke with, why don't we, Billy, you here for a particular article?
Two articles that I know that we need to add in. One of them is an updated zoning map, and the other is the reuse of the old landfill access road. Although we took at the October town meeting and changed the use of the land to the left of the access road as you go up from Randolph Ave. What we didn't do is change the use of the road from landfill purposes to municipal purposes. So I'll do that with Mr. Flynn and get it in the right order and submit it by before the 5th.
Okay.
Zoning map is a planning board article that they will be submitting, correct?
The zoning board article, the zoning map article, yes. It's actually, it's the planning department being done with Alan Bishop, because our map is, we have, we found a few mistakes in the plan itself. It was last adopted by town meeting in 1995. There was a map amendment that was added in in 2002, but there's no, we didn't implement what we passed that town meeting. We created a plan, but we never added in the overlay districts. So what we did is we took a 1995 map that was based on a hand-drawn map, and we did it in AutoCAD in 2002. And they're just, it's not the same. So we're trying to go back and fix the mistakes that happened between one software package and the handwritten package. Now we do it parcel by parcel. We can identify all of those. So it's a bit of a process that we have to identify where the holes are when we do it parcel by parcel. So the list will be fairly long, identifying what parcels are. So it's more the planning department than the planning board. They'll be submitting it. I'll do it any way you want.
Well, no, I was asking because I didn't know whether you were asking us to submit it, or I just assumed it was a planning board article. But if it's, is it one that we as a board would be submitting? Because I think that's what we want to discuss tonight.
I think it actually is going to wind up, it would be the planning board that would have to submit it because it is, it is their zoning.
Yeah, that makes sense. All right. And the landfill access road? All right, and the landfill access road, that's one that you will connect, yes, but you're gonna work with town council on that one?
I'll write it with John Flynn.
Okay. Okay.
That's it for my articles.
Okay, great, all right.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Bye.
Good night. Okay, so, we should talk about articles we want to submit, and also, I had a conversation with Rick Neely, and he gave me an update on what the town government study committee will be submitting, and there's one of them that both our board and their committee are interested in, so I just wanted to mention the ones that he mentioned, that he went over with me. And the, one that both boards would consider cosponsoring is the article for a stronger town administrator form of government. So, we've asked town council to draft something, we have not received a draft yet, but the government study committee is also looking at this and intended to submit an article. So, I mentioned to Rick that I'd bring a discussion of it tonight to see whether we'd want to co-sponsor it with the government study committee, and that way, they and we together would be able to look at the draft once we get it. I think they're meeting on the 5th, and we'd be meeting next on the 6th, so we could hopefully have the article language well enough in advance that there'd be an opportunity for them to review it and comment on it on the 5th and us on the 6th. And then the idea would be that the, I'm talking with the town administrator and town council, the idea would be that the article itself would be fairly short and simple, and that the job description of the town administrator would really be something we'd work out in the next, say, six weeks, with the idea of giving that to the warrant committee, presenting that to the warrant committee in the form of either a proposed recommendation or something that we would request that they consider for their recommendation. So, the recommendation will be in more detail, have the duties of the town administrator that we and the government study committee, and the town administrator and town council, and maybe others, come up with together jointly. But the article itself would be short, and the detail, and not have detail, the detail would be in the recommendation that we'd ask the warrant committee to put forward, which I'm sure we'd be going in and having some meetings with the warrant committee after we agree on this ourselves. So, does, how does that sound?
That makes sense to me, yeah.
Okay. The town government study committee is putting forward articles for an audit committee for, is it an article for a quorum article?
Yeah, the quorum article sounded fine.
Yeah.
I had some problems with the audit committee in, well, there were some language problems in, you know, calling things generally accepted accounting principles when they should have been generally accepted auditing standards and things like, that I sent off to Rick, they were just clearly wrong language.
Okay.
The other thing I did mention to him and shot along a, the, an article on, you know, what constitutes a full audit committee for, at a municipal level, and it goes far, far beyond what that article would call for. Now, and as I put it to Rick, you know, I don't know if you considered this and intended it to be what I called a weaker audit committee, because it would, its duties would be limited. On the other hand, a full-blown audit committee could be a pretty onerous task, that you might have a lot of difficulty finding people to fill the role, so, but-
So, you're talking with Rick about this?
I emailed him tonight, or this afternoon, so, I haven't heard that yet.
They may take it up at their next meeting, then. Okay, they are also going to be putting forward an article for a bylaw review committee, an article to create the OPEB trust, which is discussed in the DOR report.
Yep.
They will be submitting an article to reconstitute or reappoint the IT committee, information technology, and they, they had a vote at their, one of their previous meetings on the issue of the five versus three-member board of selectmen. They voted, I believe it was a five to four vote, not to recommend a five-member board of selectmen. Rick indicated to me that that was based on their preliminary research, that they had it on their agenda for their most recent meeting, which I think was this week, and that they did not get to it because they had a pretty full agenda, but they expect to take it up again on the 5th. So, he indicated that there may be another vote taken on that, because they've got some additional research results. So, I did say to him that maybe that would be something that we, I don't know whether you want to talk about that tonight, or give them any feedback on our thoughts on the three-member versus five-member, or, or not discuss it and just wait and let, see where the research that they're doing, what the results are. But I thought I'd bring it up because it's likely that there could, I shouldn't say it's likely, it's possible that there could be an article to that effect, they won't know until the 5th.
I guess, yeah, I haven't changed on it, really. I can see, I can see an advantage to it as the board moves towards more of a policy-setting board, and, and, you know, a stronger town administrator, town manager kind of role, that when it's strictly policy-setting or more policy-setting, the five-member board might make more sense in that you can break it to subcommittees and consider policies where it makes it, it's kind of difficult to do that as a three-member board. And beyond that, I'm not sure it makes an awful lot of difference. I can see that the way we're constituted now with not a strong town administrator is probably better than having five members, because it just gets unwieldy, drives the town administrator crazy.
That's my big concern about a five-member board, is the impact it will have on the town administrator.
Until you move to, the bulk of the responsibility for running town government falls with the town administrator as opposed to the selectman, yeah.
I agree, but although I still think five members, even if it's, even with a stronger town administrator, still means more communication that the town administrator's doing, because it's maybe not, it's maybe informing the board of things that are going on rather than, you know, consulting with the board or asking the board members' views, or arranging different items for the agenda, because there'll be presumably less things on the agenda and more detail.
Right.
Or more time spent possibly on certain items, but I still think it will have some kind of a burden on the town administrator.
Yeah, I don't know what their discussion is, I mean, I think there are probably more five-member boards than there are three-member boards now, but I'm not positive about that.
Yeah, it does seem to be the case.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm still of the same view that I was when Rick Neely was here last summer, which is that the most important thing to do is going to the stronger town administrator, because I think that could work well with whether it's three or five, but-
And then you can revisit the three, five question down the road, sure.
Yeah, but it will be interesting to see what the results are of their research, because I guess, I think they had one person doing research now, they have a couple of people doing research, contacting more towns, doing more interviews, so it would be interesting to see what their results are.
Yeah, would be.
Do we have any, well, so, it may be premature for us to take any vote on anything, but do we have any further thoughts we want to offer to them? You could always make them directly, but-
Yeah, I'll make them directly.
I did mention to Rick I'd at least bring it up tonight.
I've spoken to a couple of them myself.
Okay, so, those are the articles the government study committee will be bringing up. Now, we have, we've already voted to submit an article for an appropriation from, we've identified free cash as the source, but to use one-time money for the Affordable Housing Trust. So, I haven't seen the draft yet, I know town council has that on his list to draft, I'm sure that's a sample, to see what some of the money the town will appropriate to. But should we be submitting a request, a requested amount? Then I think, because, you know, we do want to also probably talk about some other one-time money requests, because other boards are submitting one-time money requests, and whether it's the Capitol Committee or this committee, other boards that might report to us.
I mean, I'm sure the article will through to see what some of the town will.
Yes.
But, yeah, I think we need something to go to the, with what we would like to see, sure.
Well, I think we need to give the warrant committee a request earlier rather than later, because they're already starting the budget process. Tonight, they were meeting with the school committee, so I'm sure they'll have some of our departments scheduled for early January. So, I had mentioned at the last meeting that we should, recommended that we consider seeking $500,000 for the Affordable Housing Trust, because it's, it's a big number, and it's, but it's a, it's an important-
Yeah, if we really want to do something serious about affordable housing in the town, yeah.
Yeah, and we have-
It's an important group, you said?
It's an important group of, it's not a committee, I was almost gonna say committee, it's an important entity, it's a trust, and the trustees are all people with some expertise in housing, and we know we have a real need for affordable housing in Milton, and, you know, we, for a long time, we've been, and we'll see where this all goes at the DHCD, but we've had the 40B kind of hanging over our heads as something, because we hadn't met our 10%, that that was really something developers could use to override zoning and whatnot, so, and we've been responding, I think, to affordable housing in that context of the 40B context, so, assuming-
Right.
If we get the 1.5% certified by the DHCD, you know, that doesn't mean we don't want to do affordable housing, we want to do affordable housing because it's the right thing to do for Milton for a variety of reasons.
Right, and we're still following our 10%.
Yeah, and we need some resources in order to do it. We don't have the Community Preservation Act, we don't have other funding set aside just for this purpose. So, the trust is brand-new, we have a good group of trustees, it would be nice to get them off and running, you're one of the trustees, Tom, so it'd be nice to get your group off and running with some money to either make loans or potentially purchase a, maybe a single-family home or two-family home, to get the ball rolling.
Yep.
So, I think we should take some kind of a vote tonight to let the warrant committee know what we'll be seeking so that they can put together their list of one-time requests.
I know we had thrown around the $500,000 number, I mean, I can throw that out as a motion, move to request to the warrant committee that we seek $500,000 for, from one-time money for transfer to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Okay, does it leave a second?
I'll say now.
Okay, so, for discussion, any discussion on the, on requesting, we'll see where the warrant committee process goes, but-
Right.
I think we'll have to go down and really advocate for that, because together with the planning board, we've really tried to make this a priority.
Right, by putting $500,000 into this account, are we leaving, are we gonna be leaving other departments short?
Well, we've got $2.9 million of one-time money, I mean, this is a lot of hands out, clearly.
Yeah.
You know, it's one-time money, it shouldn't really be used for operating budgets, and, you know, unless, unless you can prove that that expenditure is just a one-time expenditure and it has future improvements to the department by doing it, you know, but otherwise, you know, I wouldn't want to see one-time money go to-
To the operating?
To plug operating budgets, it's just-
But if it would mean delaying a, an override by one more year?
But it not only, it really doesn't delay it because it makes it bigger, that what you need that next year to balance, because that money goes away unless you-
Yeah, doubles it.
Yeah, it just, it makes it that much worse.
Because, you know, if you take, we'll just use a round number, if you take a million dollars out of free cash to put it into recurring operating expenses in FY16, then once you hit FY17-
It's not there anymore.
It's not there, so you gotta replace that million, and then you roll the money forward, it's really $2 million that you're talking about.
So it's-
So, but, you know, there's other departments, including under boards that don't, separately independent elected or appointed boards that are submitting requests, so the school committee's submitting requests for one-time money. I think there's other requests we're gonna have that we should talk about, too, whether it's the fire stations, which you'll probably address, Tom, through the Capitol Committee, or other work, but, you know, by putting this in, it's just a request, and the warrant committee's just gonna go through what they did last year and what they do every year, tabulate them all, and then they'll do the balancing act and figure out what they want to recommend, but it'll be our job to go down and advocate for this, and probably bring the planning board into it and ask them to join us in making the request, because we work together on the housing production plan. I think it would be good if two elected boards stood up and went down to the warrant committee and said, this is a priority, funding source for us, and we've got great people on this housing trust, we want them to make some progress and really help move us forward on, in this area.
Yeah.
Regardless of what happens on the 40Bs, we want to go forward on affordable housing on our, on our terms and on what we want, and that's, this would help us get there.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, I hear what you're saying, and I, I am an advocate for affordable housing, but $500,000 to me is just a lot of money to put into some trust that is not even set up yet to be-
It is, the trust is established.
It is established, the account is established?
Well, there's no money yet, so there's no, there's no count, but-
Right.
But town meeting approved a trust a few years ago, and unfortunately, we're a few years, I know we're not the, but we appointed the trustees well over a year ago.
I just, I just don't want to do it at the expense of the, of the departments, you know, of other departments. I mean, do we have people calling town hall today looking for help in buying houses?
No. I can't speak for the planning department or-
Right.
Again, you know, it's not necessarily helping, well, I mean, it could be that, but, but more what it is, is, is again, just taking control of how you move towards your goal of making affordability in the town. And if you don't do it, then somebody else is gonna do it for you, and usually that answer is, well, and we know what the answers have been, and, you know-
40Bs.
40Bs, and sometimes they're good, sometimes they're not, you just don't know, it's catch, it's catch and count.
But is this something you'd want to fund every year going forward, then?
No, not necessarily.
No, I mean, right now, we have, because there are some years we have negative free cash or very little free cash, so we currently have $2.9 million in free cash, and it's possible that the warrant, you know, I think the warrant committee will look at that and look at what the sources of it were, and maybe they'll revise their revenue projections a little bit, but probably most of it wouldn't be used for operating, it would only be used for one-time funds. So, various boards are all gonna submit requests, and then the warrant committee's gonna have to go through the process of deciding what are the priorities, so we'll have to advocate what the priorities are. But, you know, the housing plan, some of our goals included things like tax title properties that the treasurer might acquire.
Accessory structures.
And once the treasurer acquires a property, then maybe, maybe that's where the housing trust comes in, it can work with attracting developers or bring in Habitat for Humanity or some other organization that would help, and they've, that way they've got a source of funding to do educational outreach maybe first, and then make loans or help facilitate purchases, maybe they become a joint venture, or they-
Down payment assistance, yeah.
And I think the housing authority, then it becomes another resource to the, to the trust, and the housing authority might even be managing-
In terms of being able to administer some of the, some of the things that you do.
I mean, I'm not sure what the right amount or the wrong amount to put into this account is, just seems to me that $500,000 is a lot. You know, when you open up an account, in my opinion, I say you put 50 grand into it, let it sit there, and then see if we can raise money from developments that are going on in town.
Well, we want to raise money from developments, I, yeah.